Okay, good afternoon. It is 2:02 PM on October 16th, 2005. I call this work session to order. So no roll call is necessary for a work session. Thanks to everyone for being here. This work session was called because we have a few counselors who requested an opportunity to learn more about the city's revenue sources before we talk about the FALL TAO, the Technical Adjustment Ordinance, and the projections for upcoming revenues next week. As a reminder, the FALL TAO, formerly called the Fall Budget Monitoring Process, is used primarily to reconcile beginning fund balances to the ending fund balances from the prior fiscal year, as well as to make minor policy and technical adjustments to the budget. The FALL TAO will be coming to the Finance Committee on Monday, October 20th, then to a full council meeting, a full council work session, on Wednesday, October 22nd, followed by a first reading at a full council meeting on Wednesday, November 5th. I'd now like to invite Counselor Clark to share her thinking for requesting this issue coming to council for discussion. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Council Vice President. I did request this work session, I think along with a couple of other people, because I think we need to take some time to really be educated about what's happening on the property tax in Portland. We talk a lot about what's happening in the downtown and the drop in values, and it has some very serious implications for our budget. So, in fact, some people might even call it a crisis in what's going on with downtown property values. And as I said, those decreases are going to lead to a significant number of property value assessments through, not just the downtown, but in other parts of the city, and that means a loss of revenue for the city. We're very reliant on our property taxes. I think we're going to hear that from Mr. Berry. But that's why I requested this. It's really a precursor to what's coming, that we need to prepare ourselves for that and dispel any misconceptions we have about downtown property values. So I want to thank in advance our county assessor, I think Michael Vaughn, for coming today, and for our CFO, Jonas Berry, for providing us with a little briefing presentation before we really dive into the property tax. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor Clark. A little bit of run-a-show for today. Today, we'll get an overview from the city's chief financial officer, Jonas Berry, on the city's major revenue streams. We'll then spend the bulk of the meeting with the county assessor, Michael Vaughn, talking about property taxes and how Oregon's property tax laws affect our revenue and what we can see in the next few years. So happy to have you with us today, Mr. Berry, and I will hand it over to you for your presentation.
Great. Thank you, Madam Vice President. Thank you, council. Thank you, Counselor Clark, for the introduction as well. For the record, City Chief Financial Officer, Jonas Berry. We will hear in a few minutes from our, the headliner from Multnomah County to hear about the property tax system. I do think this is a, I appreciate that this is a really great educational opportunity to share information with council, to share information with the public. I also just say I hope it starts to illuminate some questions that we'll continue to address as we go through the budget cycle. There's a very limited universe of us who are passionate about the property tax system, so I'm glad that we have folks here to share that space with us today. So maybe 10 minutes, five, 10-minute presentation. I wanted to provide a little broader context on the broad range of city revenue sources, which will lead into the property tax discussion. Note that this is a sort of compressed version of a larger presentation that was given on August 11th at the Finance Committee, so a first place to look, if you're interested in more info, would be to take a look at that 45, 50-minute conversation we had then, and of course, we expect to have more as we go forward. I do expect the opportunity to continue to have revenue-related conversations, including as soon as the work session next week, as we talk about budget process and how that might be crafted. A few comments about revenues generally. The city relies on a complex mix of revenues that range from relatively simple and small one-time charges, things like a single-use parks-related fee, or a single payment at a city parking meter, to external resources like grants, intergovernmental revenues, to more robust revenue streams like utility rates, business license taxes, or property taxes. I don't anticipate we're going to go through all the details today. Happy to do so at another time, but want to acknowledge that collection of those revenues comes from various places and various mechanisms. It requires a lot of interactivity between multiple touchpoints in the organization. Obviously, we have legal considerations relevant both to the use of those revenues, legal requirements and standards related to collection, security, and transparency. There's a lot of interaction between accounting functions, budget functions, treasury functions, technology systems, and the bureaus and service areas that share responsibility for those collection systems. I also want to acknowledge upfront the reality that when we're talking about revenues to the city, that means we're collecting money from somebody, whether that's an individual or a business that's inside our community or someone outside our community. In turn, of course, the city relies on all of that complicated revenue mix to provide the financial resources, to do all the work that the community expects of us. We take that responsibility very seriously, and we're diligently to be as efficient, effective, and transparent as we possibly can. So to turn to the conversation at hand, the, sorry, if you can go back one more slide, please. So for purposes of this kind of simplified discussion, what we tried to do is bucket the broad category, bucket the city revenues into three kind of broad categories, and we'll go through each one on their own slide here. I'm going to go through each of these very briefly as FYI and as context, and certainly expect that we're going to come back to some of these at a later meeting, a later work session, as we continue the budget discussions, but wanted to give a quick frame up here today. Okay, next slide, please. So the first, oh, sorry, maybe a couple of disclaimers before we, as we show the numbers up here. First, the numbers that are reflected here are 24, 25, so the fiscal year that just ended, unaudited actuals. We're just completing the audit work right now, so if you see these numbers in a future presentation, they might be a little different, because we're in this kind of in-between moment when we have the actual audited numbers, then we'll pivot to using those. The other disclaimer is that as we talk through these numbers, we're only talking about kind of the major categories, so I'll save, if anyone is compelled to try to sum all of these up and align to a total revenue number in a budget or an audit, don't bother, because it won't match. We're not including all of the revenues. We're just displaying some of the key categories here. So the first bucket is service charges and fees. The largest grouping here, the chart on the left, is the utility rates, and you can see how those are split between the sewer and stormwater system and the water system. And then on the right-hand side, and I'll just, and these are essentially user fees, that what we think of traditionally as utility rates, the things that show up on your bill as a utility payer. The other chart on the right-hand side is a variety of examples of some of the other types of major fees and charges that we collect in various areas. Service charges and fees are generally, almost exclusively, restricted in use. Those restrictions can vary. For example, water charges and fees can only be legally used to pay for things in the water system. SDCs, or system development charges, can only be used for their defined purposes, et cetera, et cetera. The restrictions that are around those revenues, any bucket of revenues, is typically codified either by city charter, by state law, or even sometimes by federal requirements. Next slide. The second bucket is grants, and as you can see, there's a wide mix and variety of flavors of grants that come into the city, and those provide an important source of revenues to meet specific city objectives. Typically, grants are very restricted in that they're provided for very targeted and limited uses. I'd also just flag, while receiving grants is great and wonderful, there is no free money. Grants do come attached with a whole separate rubric of application requirements, receipt and administration, monitoring, and compliance requirements, and so there is some internal cost and effort involved in receiving those grants and making sure that we're using them in compliance with the rules around those dollars. And again, don't expect to dig into all that today. There's a lot of information on this slide, but happy to come back and provide additional information in a separate forum. Next slide. And then the final of our three buckets is taxes. So in addition to some of the smaller, a couple of smaller taxes, and so you've got obviously the gas tax, and then that little sliver that says other tax is actually the arts tax. The city really has two primary flavors of taxes. The kind of salmon-orange color is business taxes, and then taxes on property, the box on the right. And so we can see where this is going here in a minute. I'd also note on this slide that a new feature has entered the presentation here, which is the little asterisk that's attached to some of these revenues, indicating that those buckets of revenues are unrestricted, meaning that they can be used for broader purposes with fewer limitations. When we talk about general fund revenues, those asterisk categories are generally the sources that are included in that mix. The business tax category includes things like the business license tax, which is a tax on business income above a certain threshold, includes the transient lodging tax, which is a tax on room rentals, includes the clean energy surcharge, and then obviously a couple others that are listed there, but it's a bucket of taxes, not necessarily all directly general fund. And now, to the next slide, next and final slide, we've arrived at the star of the show, which is property taxes. So this pie chart here kind of grabs that blue slice off the prior slide and splits out those property taxes in a little more granular detail to see the various types of property taxes that the city collects. We have a small amount for outstanding voted, voter-approved general obligation bonds. We have the existing parks local option levy. We have the children's levy. We have a separate levy, property tax levy, for the fire and police disability retirement fund. And then the box on the, the slice on the far right, about $350 million of general fund property taxes generated by the city's permanent rate. That was a lot in a very short amount of time, but wanted to make sure and give you that context. I will remain in the room. We also have CBO, City Budget Office Director, and the City Economist in the room to help answer questions, but I'd like to take this opportunity now to hand off to the county assessor to talk us through the exciting vagaries of our property tax system. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
And Mr. Berry, I know, looking at this agenda here, that we were going to hear both presentations and then have time for Q and A. I have a few counselors that have put themselves in the queue. Does it make sense to wait until both presentations have happened?
I defer to you. I mean, I want to make sure we give plenty of space for the property tax conversation, so.
I think if there's a clarification around your presentation, now would be a good time.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Vice President. Hi. Jonas, I think, I thought I was coming to a meeting that was on both the business license tax and property tax, so I now realize that was a pretty quick presentation on business license tax. When will you return to do that for the entire council?
I would, it's TBD, Counselor.
That's such a, what percentage of our general fund is the business license taxes?
I don't know, 40%-ish? Yeah, yeah, and we are coming back. I mean, as we have the conversation with you at the work session next week, that will include some of this revenue.
I was just, thought it was going to be both today, so that's why I wanted to get a little more out of this, on the business license tax.
Yeah, to clarify, next week we'll be coming back on the 22nd, and my presentation will be primarily on the business license tax.
Okay, and so I'd have to watch the Finance Committee to get the comprehensive report that you gave?
We're coming to the work session, the Wednesday work session.
Okay.
And just a broader answer to your question, Counselor, is this is not, my intent is this is not the only conversation we have. We are happy to have this conversation with counselors as often as you'd like. It's helpful to do in this large forum so that we have the benefit of sharing everyone's information, so at any time council would like to coordinate agendas to have us come back and share that information, we're more than happy.
I'm putting a pin in it, because there was, a couple of years ago, we were surprised at the business license taxes being higher than projected, and now it seems like it's going the other direction. So that's a pretty big red alert that we have a revenue problem, so we do need to spend more time on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. I know I rushed through it in the beginning, but I'll say it again. Finance Committee on Monday, the 20th, full council work session Wednesday, the 22nd of next week, and then also a first reading at full council Wednesday, November 5th. We'll make sure that that info is sent out. Counselor Smith?
Thank you, Madam vice chair. I am looking for that 16-page memo that we were supposed to get. Is that out yet?
It's a great question. It should be out. It's been, I know, submitted through the E-council system. I don't know what the status of publication is, but that's on the agenda.
I thought we were getting that email to us.
I will follow up on that, Counselor. It's available. I don't know the status. I haven't actually been at my computer for the last four or five hours, so I will check on it as soon as I have a chance.
I'm seeing a thumbs up from Haley behind you.
Okay, thank you.
Is it an email or is it E-council?
It's posted on E-council now.
I'm being told it's posted on E-council, right?
I'll send it through email. I don't have access to E-council.
Yeah, some of us like emails still.
You can send it through email. It's on the Council agenda website, not just email.
It just came today, and I know we were supposed to have it a couple of days ago, and so I hear what Counselor Ryan is saying, we haven't had time to look at that memo before we came in here, and so I'm a little at a disadvantage. I wasn't able to be prepared for this.
Yeah, no, thank you for flagging it, Counselor, and just to be clear for anybody who's watching, there's sort of, there's a couple of conversations that are getting kind of mixed together here. One is the conversation today around revenues, and specifically property taxes. Separately related to the TAO, the Technical Adjustment Ordinance, there is a memo and a whole suite of documents that are published on the agenda, I'm told, as of right, as of now, on the agenda webpage for the Finance Committee, which will be hearing the TAO ordinance. They're related, but the conversation today, I just wanted, for anyone who's listening on the public, the information in the TAO memo that you referenced, Counselor, is a little bit different from the conversation that we're having today.
Oh, I was confused, because I thought the mayor was saying that, that when we were in our meeting, that we were supposed to have a 16-page memo to prepare us for this meeting today.
Preparation for next week, Counselor, for the 22nd.
Okay, okay, got it.
And the plan has been to make sure that everybody gets that by email as well. I believe Council Ops is planning on sending it out.
Okay.
I think the chiefs may have gotten it already, but it didn't go to all of us individually.
Excellent, excellent.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Canell?
Yeah, just two questions to clarify. One is, the memo you're talking about is Exhibit 7, right? The 20-pager that's on the?
It's Exhibit 7, I believe that's correct, yes.
And the second question I had is, similar to Counselor Ryan's question earlier, are we going to be talking in this work session or in another future scheduled one about the fire and police disability and retirement tax?
Well, I believe, I mean, this is a broad conversation about property taxes, so what I might suggest is we can let the county assessor give their presentation, and if it's a natural fit to have that conversation today, we're here and happy to do that. If that's, feels like it's a better fit to move to the 22nd or another forum, would defer to your preference.
Thanks.
And my hope is that we actually will have, in the TAO conversation, it sounds like, an in-depth study of the revenue streams called the business license taxes.
Thank you, Counselor. Yeah, so I'll just preview, the work session on the 22nd, which I believe has been communicated, but I'll state again for transparency, will kind of have three sections. The first is a conversation about the TAO and what's in the TAO and previewing that so that you have a couple of weeks before it comes to council for a vote, or for a first reading, I should say, on November 5th. The second section of that work session will be to talk about kind of the revenue and financial picture. We probably need to make some decisions around how deep we want to dive, given the limited amount of space, but we'll at least start that conversation and can try to make sure we provide some of that information. The third piece, which I also think is critical, is to spend a significant amount of time getting council feedback on the budget process. We have to begin that process imminently, and we would really, really like to have space for council to provide thoughts and feedback on that budget process, so it's a lot to cover in that three-hour session. We're happy to answer questions and navigate it however council chooses, but I just want to set expectations that deep dive might be a little bit of a, I'm not sure if we'll have time to do a full deep dive, but certainly happy to come back and have additional discussion if that's necessary.
I think it will be helpful that, for this council, to have a comprehensive dialogue about where the revenue comes from, and I also think it's great that your partner at the county is here to talk about property taxes, which influence the county's budget even more, but we're all part of local government, so it's helpful to hear all of it. And if you could make those connections, that would be great.
Anything further, Counselor? Okay, Counselor Clark?
Just to be clear, I asked for this just for a deep dive into the property tax. That's all we're going to do today. Sorry if I misled anyone, or I didn't, wasn't clear from the beginning. It's a very complex system that we need to get our head around, and it's about half of our, of our budget, so thanks.
So it sounds like we've been through the introduction from our CFO. We're turning to Michael Vaughn, our county assessor. Thank you for being here. I know that you had to move some things around to make it work. We really appreciate it, and I think with counselors with different backgrounds in how our property tax system works, there is a lot that we can learn as we move into our fall budgeting process, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Mike Vaughn, Multnomah County Assessor, and right on cue, the technology isn't working. There we go. Okay, I really appreciate the opportunity to present in front of you. I have been, spent probably about 21 years of my professional career working in property tax administration, 10 years, the last 10 years with the county, and the system after that many years hasn't gotten easier, it's just gotten more complicated. So what I intend to do today is take us through a high-level overview of that system, and not to make you an experts, but just to help establish the terminology that we'll be using throughout the remaining slides to talk about specific budgetary and revenue impacts to the city, and I'll be also introducing the county as a way to compare. As we work through this, I want to connect Oregon law, property tax law, with that revenue, so that'll be something I attempt to do. I have no problem taking questions during the presentation. If you want to ask, that's fine. I also have as many, as much time as you want to stay after the presentation and work through it. And then what I want to do is, I'm working through the city data, working with, starting at the city, moving through the core. I will end with one of the larger tax accounts that have made the press lately, and I really want to highlight through that, it's just really talking about, you know, how all of the press and the economic trends relate to the reality that we're all facing with our budget situations for the coming, current, and next fiscal year. All right, after 21 years, definition of property tax. It's the administration of state law to fund our communities. So if it's not in statute, administrative rule, the Oregon's constitution, or a tax court interpreting one of those three, I can't do it. And so I often start that with a lot of folks who think that somehow, as the assessor, I have the ability to influence decisions. I, as well as my staff, some who are here today, really spent a great deal of time trying to understand a collection of laws that have been written over 50 years, and trying to relate those collection of laws to a simple math equation that we use today. And that math equation is simply a rate, which is a district budget multiplied by a taxable value to give us a property tax. And that's as simple as I can make the equation. It's not a very complicated one. Again, what makes it complicated is that we take 50 years of legislative thought and try to apply that to today's circumstances, and if you think back 50 years, pre-internet, right? And so, you know, you think back to these things that, you know, the, the It's not a very complicated one. Again, what makes it complicated is that we take 50 years of legislative thought and try to apply that to today's circumstances. And if you think back 50 years, pre-internet, right? And so, you know, you think back to these things that, you know, the way things were, and try to think that, how were they envisioning this to be applied and used in 2025? So that's kind of what I want to talk through. And let's see. All right, so our major tax structure came about in the 90s. This is really the reform to our tax environment that came about that we're dealing with today. The first major constitutional amendment came about in 1990, and it's referred to as Measure 5. Voters approved this measure to limit basically district budgets. It limits district budgets by saying that districts can collect, school districts can collect no more than $5 per thousand of a property's market value. And for general governments, everything that's not a school district or education district, that is a $10 per thousand of a property's market value. Now, what's important to realize about this is this is a limitation on a property's market value. So in 1990, Measure 50 didn't exist. We didn't have maximum assessed value or an assessed value. Property taxes were based on a property's market value. And so we see already a law that was created pre-Measure 50, which I'll get into in a second, and it's based on a property's market value. So when we're dealing with this limitation, we'll talk about it later in slides in terms of compression, and I'll define what that is and give you examples. So don't worry about taking the notes, I'll definitely try to clarify it as best I can. The second half of the equation was further limited by voters in 1997 and became eventually known as Measure 50. Measure 50 limits the value that a property's tax can be based on, and it created what's known as a maximum assessed value. So it moved from taxes based on a property's market value to this new concept of a maximum assessed value. So essentially, as that name sort of dictates, it's the maximum value that you could use for the tax equation, so the rate times the value. And basically, the fundamental or the foundation of our tax system ever since the 90s has been based on these two concepts that are in Oregon's constitution, Article 11, Section 11, and it limits basically any other aspect to Oregon law. And I know since I've been around, there's been talks of reforming these for at least 20, 25 years, and that's something that, you know, I can definitely address throughout the presentation. But that's not really the major bent here, and I just wanted to talk through conceptually some of these concepts. So rates, you're a taxing district, there's 59 taxing districts in the county. You're probably better, you know, more familiar with this than I am, but basically, your three common rates are your operating rate, known as your permanent rate, your local options, which are voter-approved measures, and your bonds. Those are your three rates we use in the tax calculation. It's, bear with me one second. It's flying a little too fast through my notes. So for any single property account, there is between eight and 12 different districts that assess a levy. And when we talk about rates in terms of aggregating those rates on a single property tax bill, that comes up with an overall rate that we use in the tax calculation purposes. Just a little fact is, Mollinmack County, the average aggregate tax rate for the county is $23.56 per thousand of a property's maximum assessed value, or assessed value. And then downtown area, we do have rates that are approaching just under $27 per thousand. So just wanted to highlight those two facts. The values that were established under Measure 50, I'll spend a little bit of time on. The first is the real market value, and I think this is something that's, I think most people understand it, you know, you've bought a house or you sold a house, and you know market value is the essential thing that you come to an agreement over when you're buying or selling any property. It is a value that is driven by an opinion. So I tell this to everyone, that market value is an opinion until a sale happens. And so as we're working in the assessor's office, we have 30 or so appraisers who are out there continually learning their craft, which takes three to five years to get designated as an appraiser. You're really learning how to develop that opinion through economic resources, understanding how markets work, how buyers and sellers, essentially the market, interact to come up with purchase price and sales prices and those sorts of things. So as we're working in the government, the public, the public sector, I don't have enough appraisers to go out and view each property every year. We have over 300,000 tax accounts in the county. And so what we typically do is rely on a system of statistical analyses to generate opinions of value. So we're constantly looking at historical data to generate trends, much like the city's economist will do. You know, we're looking at the information to help us generate which way is the market moving so that we can get out in front of values, so that we can make sure that we're maintaining the most credible value we can on property. Now, again, 300,000 properties, and if you're talking statistics, you're usually looking at averages. And so oftentimes, you know, you could see values don't always align with sales, and that's why we have appraisers to make sure we're out there constantly getting it right. The second value that I introduced under Measure 50 is maximum assessed value. Now, this was a value that was created that's in the constitution, and once created on an account, it is sort of set in stone. It really can't be changed. The rule is, every year, it can go up by no more than 3%. It's a test, unless, of course, there's an exception to that rule, unless you've done something physical to change your property. So I often use the example of if you have a bare piece of land, you have a maximum assessed value, market value, but if you build a house on it, obviously, we can't just trend that value at 3% because it won't capture the improvements that you've built. So if you built a house, we're going to be adding, you know, that value. So generally, maximum assessed value is locked in, and grows at 3% per year unless something changes. Now, the final value is assessed value, which I like to refer to as the taxable value. This is a value that is also formulaic like maximum assessed value, and it's simply the smaller of the two. So it's the lesser of real market value or maximum assessed value on every account. So we go through all 300,000 accounts, and we say which one's lower, and then whichever is lower, that becomes a taxable value. Now, on average, the typical residential property's maximum assessed value is about 50% of market value. So million-dollar house has a maximum assessed value of 500,000. That's the 50% threshold. That's the average. Some are higher, some are lower. So typically, if we're sticking with that scenario, assessed value for that account would be 500,000. So we would be basing taxes for that property on the smaller number in that example of So before I jump into the city data, questions?
Councillor Green, did you have a question on the last slide?
Yeah, just briefly, so you mentioned that, you know, there's the 3% per year cap unless there's a triggering event where you sort of change the, there's a meaningful or substantive change to the property, like a remodel, or something that, like, something like that. Do you, do you, do you think that explains a lot of why we see kind of wildly arbitrary differences in individual parcel-by-parcel relative burden across the county?
Councillor, great question. So our job is to equally apply the values amongst all the accounts. We know that through years of experience that it results in inequities in taxes. So often, our office will get a call, you know, two neighbors right down similar houses, both at $1 million, one is paying $8,000 in tax, and the next one is paying $12,000 in tax. And unfortunately, what we have to say is, well, when we were developing, the laws were passed and we were developing, you know, the market value, then we were developing the maximum assessed value, there were reasons why the values were lower at the time. This was back in 97, right? So I can't tell you what was going on then, but what I can tell you is, the maximum assessed value was created based on the values at that time. And then since then, it's grown up at 3%. So you get neighbors who'll have very wildly different taxable values, even though they have properties that are almost identical in market value. And that's, and that's often the case. Now, you add new construction, remodels, you know, you add an addition, and that further complicates the inequity that we see with differing taxes. And then I also make this plug that, you know, every year, I send out 30 appraisers into the market with, you know, identifying new construction, and it's, we basically ask new property owners to let us do our work. Only about 20% of the houses we knock on actually let us in the door. And so another challenge that we have, which is not surprising, I get it, but we still have our job. We still have to fund the districts that provide services to your properties, so we're going to do the best we can through building plans and try to figure it out. And it happens every year where we get an appeal, we go out, and we said, well, it looked like we said, we thought there was a finished attic, and there's not. So we're going to go ahead and fix that for you. So there's two or three major reasons, councillor, why we typically see those inequities.
Yeah, thank you for clarifying that. And I understand it's not the county's fault, it's the sort of policy choice that we have made in this state. And I just, I just note that for this body, thank you.
Councillor Canall, did you have something as well?
Yeah, and while we're doing that, if our tech folks, if there's a way to turn up our presenter's mic, I'd really appreciate it because I am hearing about half the volume here. So I had two questions. One is a follow-up to councillor Green's. What tools do you have to incentivize increasing that 20% number? Of people who let you in the door?
It's a great question. It's been brought to the federal constitutional level as to what right the assessors have to enter a property. And the way that the State Department of Justice has dealt with this question is to say that there isn't an actual right for us to be on property. We can ask, so we can walk up to a house and knock on a door. If a property owner refuses access, we have to leave and try to do the best job we can. If, however, we generate a value that they feel is wrong, and they appeal it, the tax courts have said that if you want this appeal to continue, you have to give access to your property.
Got it.
And so that, in all the years I've been around, have been, it's been the only way to incentivize, you know, to say, look, we're just trying to get a right, you know, we don't have a stake in anything other than accuracy. And so typically, we have appraisers who are trying to, you know, articulate that, and you know, it's, but it's, it's still kind of in that 20% to 30% range, depending on property, markets, areas, that kind of thing.
Okay, and then secondly, sort of logically, anecdotally, the major improvement sort of trigger for a second, for a reappraisal, seems like it would, and anecdotally, it has just sort of disincentivized certain types of improvements. Do you have data on that from a more aggregate level, though?
I'm not sure I understand the question. Could you clarify what improvements?
In terms of, you said that if someone's, for example, you mentioned building up a lot, but if you're adding a bathroom or something, and that's going to get your, your house reappraised, and that's potentially going to have an impact on your, the values that you, you know, have on the side here, do you have data showing whether or not that that is a sufficient enough deterrent that it disincentivizes the improvement in the first place?
Councillor, I do not.
Okay, because we have that anecdotally, I think, from at least some of the constituents, but...
And just to be clear, when someone is remodeling a house or doing an addition, it's not a reassessment of the house. Really, it's just picking up the additional improvements to modify the maximum assessed value to account for those, right? So I can tell you that there are plenty of unlicensed improvements out there that we find through market research. You know, we, we see, you know, a property sells, and we look at the listing, and next thing you know, it's been remodeled and gutted and new wiring, and we've never seen a permit come through. So typically, we first gain notice of properties through permitting, and that's where we identify sort of a hot lead. The next step is sort of the sale of a property that shows us pictures of the inside to see if we've got accurate inventories. So I have seen people not permit for that reason, and folks have said, I don't, I didn't get the permits, I don't want the assessor out here. So I have had that conversation before, but I don't know if that has deterred people from not, I wouldn't know whether they have been completely deterred from building at all.
Thanks.
We've got two more for you. Councillor Dunphy?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions, and I'm trying to get this to work in my thick skull. Property taxes are, for the assessed value, they are reevaluated when a house sells, correct? Like, if a house sells on the market, the new owner has a different assessed value than the previous owner, potentially?
Councillor, that's not correct.
Okay.
We don't reassess at sale. That's a Prop 50 California thing that we hear all the time.
Okay.
No, there are very few provisions for changing maximum assessed value on property. One would be, if a property comes out of exemption, we would reassess that property. Complete, you know, demolition, rebuild, we would, we would reassess. There are, there are reasons we would reassess in law, but not a sale.
Okay. So, and also not necessarily, I mean, I'm thinking, I'm trying to think of like, I'm comparing a 100-year-old house in, on North Williams, after all the gentrification that has happened and the increased property values compared to 50 years ago, versus a ranch that was built in the 80s out in Lentz. That they can have wildly disparate valuations in the real, like, the actual market value versus the assessed value. And there, I remember, I've heard horror stories historically of like, properties that are assessed at 20% of their, their actual value. Are there still situations out there like that where a million-dollar home is being assessed as a $20,000 home or whatever, or $200,000 home?
So the ratio I've seen is low as 10%.
Jesus, okay.
And so those properties are, unless they've done extensive remodeling, they've added, you know, those types of reassessment things, it would stay in place. And that's, and that's where we see the biggest inequity. We have those type of properties that have tax bills that are 1,000 to 2,000, and then say some, a property of that size, you know, built southwest, northwest Portland, paying, you know, 10, 12 times that number. So it becomes, one of our biggest challenges is explaining that scenario to a taxpayer going, wait a minute, north and southeast Portland are paying, on average, 20, 30% of value, where we're paying in northwest and southwest, 60, 70%. In fact, those are the most engaged neighborhoods with my office.
And we don't have any mechanism to right-size that at any real period of the life of the existing. If a house gets demolished or hit by a tornado, and they put something new, that's a new entity that we can look at. But in effect, we are, we are permanently benefiting homeowners in Irvington at the cost of new development in Powellhurst.
Councillor, that is correct. That's, that's one of the challenges, and that's the problem with all of this being enshrined in the constitution. This is exactly what the constitution says, that you do not get the right to change Mav unless one of these exception events, seven exception events occur. Outside of that, there is no reassessment.
Horrifying, thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. I think we're getting into the Gordian knot now of our property tax law. And I really was hoping that we would eventually get to what the impact is going to be on our budget, and maybe this conversation about the inequities, we can talk about later when it comes to trying to change the law, and whether or not the League of Oregon Cities or anybody else is willing to start nibbling around the edges of some of these things, because we don't have the power to really make that change ourselves. But I was hoping that we'll, we'll get to the overall impact here. Thank you. I think you did answer, I had a question about the linkage between permits and a trigger for your attention, and I think you answered that, that you do that.
Yes.
Councillor Zimmerman?
To councillor Dunphy, your analogy between Irvington and Lentz, I would say, would be more accurate if you picked a neighborhood who was not desirable in 1995. Irvington was still desirable in 95, but parts of Alberta, parts of Williams are much better examples of that, where they are seven-figure homes today.
Yeah.
And then your statement is dramatically clear and inaccurate.
Thank you, councillor, for clarifying that. I think we are ready to move to the next slide.
All right, impacts. So hopefully, I've confused everyone. Let's go in to dig into some of the actual data and maybe it'll get a little clearer. So I made some of the cardinal rules of, you know, packing these slides with data. I tried to graph and make it nicer, but this is it. So let me walk through this. The first category is assessed value. And you'll see there, this is, this is the cities, the city of Portland, this is the aggregate for all of the accounts. And so going back in memory, this is the total aggregate of all taxable value for the city. Data begins in '23. So we'll look at a tax year in terms of the first year, the year that it was built. I know that's different than the revenue fiscal years. But in '23, you had just over $79 billion worth of taxable value for the city of Portland. In '24, that increased just over 3.5% to $82 billion. From an, you know, analytical standpoint, 3%, as we were noting before, is the typical trend for maximum assessed value. So as we're looking at assessed value, 3% growth would sort of mean that things are stable. You know, values are kind of going up, but you're not seeing a lot of new improvements, not a lot of cranes, not a lot of permits, you know, that sort of thing. But things are okay. They're stable. In '25, so this is the bills that we just certified and are actually going out in the mail this week. The taxable value total for the city of Portland is $83.86 billion, which is a year-over-year increase of 2.24%. Now, when we see assessed value growth that lags 3%, which is, again, if you're thinking about those trends, that means that the, usually the market, the economy, real estate sector is not, is not growing. It's not stable. In fact, not only is there not new construction, but it's likely that values are decreasing. And so as we were talking about, when you start seeing the year-over-year decrease of, or below 3% growth in taxable value, that's going to correspond directly to revenue. And that's something that I'll talk about on the next category, extended taxes. So for the city of Portland, going through '23, you, by law, and I'll say, and I'll make a distinction here, by statute, you were able to bill $572 million in '23. In '24, that's $617.8 million, which is an 8% increase. That is the total by law that you're able to collect going through your typical budgetary process. So after you certified your budget through your process and you've sent it to me saying, collect this amount of money, I go out and I generate the tax bills for $617.8 million last year and $634.5 million this year. Again, year-over-year increase of 2%, 2.7% in the budget. It is, for taxes, it's not as concerning to me. It's not the same thing as taxable value. I mean, you obviously want to see numbers in line with inflation. But there's a lot of reason why taxes can go up greater than 3% or not grow, depending on local, you know, measures or budget increases or things that you're doing to, you know, to your budget at this level. So, but it's something that I want to show, that this is the amount of money that, according to statute, you're obligated, or that you're entitled to collect. That's what we refer to as extended taxes. So I've created 300, or however many tax accounts are in the city of Portland, I've created $634 million in receipts. The next category is imposed. So you'll notice that number is below the extended taxes. This is where the constitutional limitation of Measure 5 comes into play and is compression. So for '23, you wanted to collect 572 million, but because of the limitation, you were only able to collect 549 million, representing a $22.7 million reduction in taxes due to the Measure 5 limitation in Oregon's Constitution. So in '24, that number is 29 million, which you see between '23 and '24, compression increased by over 27%. That's usually a sign that values are dipping. And I know I've been talking to your economists and the other economists in the metro region for the last few years, talking about, ever since 2020, when are we really getting into the point where market declines are going to actually start showing up in tax receipts? I would say '24 was the first time we saw a significant increase in that, and that's due to that limitation. And so when you see a 27% increase in compression loss, and I, let me just put this in perspective, the entire county, all 59 taxing districts for this year, had a loss of $147 million. So this is not just the city of Portland, you know, issue. This is, all of the districts are sort of sharing in this throughout the region. So that reduction increased to $33.8 million for the most recent tax year, which is a 16.6% increase. We're going to delve in the next two slides into the reasons why. But I wanted to pause if there was a question around this particular slide.
Counselor Quay Amalane?
Thank you, Council President. You kind of started touching on this, that this is what we're seeing in our region, in other cities and counties. And I'm wondering specifically for assessed value, if you can talk about how our year-over-year percentage compares to other similarly sized cities and counties even outside of Oregon?
Well, in, in Oregon, I can tell you, there's no other city or county that comes close to our values, our assessed values, our real market values. So the closest we could be looking is up in the Seattle area with the various counties up there. I haven't followed them as closely because I'm trying to figure out how to get ours right. But I will say that I'm seeing some of the similar characteristics in downtown quarters that have not fully recovered since 2020. And so I don't have specific numbers for you, Counselor, but I can say that, you know, throughout the, up and down the, the West Coast, we're seeing something similar with major, larger cities. Now, I have heard that some of those cities are recovering at different rates, and so there are some increases, but I don't have anything more specific than that.
Counselor Dunphy?
Thank you. Again, my thick skull, I'm trying to figure this all out. I have also heard, I represent East Portland, and I've been, I also used to serve on the Park Rose School District Budget Committee. And we were essentially flat for revenues out there because of compression. Even though we had a whole lot of new investment, we had some new housing come online, we had some new property development, and whatever, all the development happening at the airport also directly affected them. But that meant that our revenue remained flat even though our expenses and our demands are going up. Is the compression geographically isolated, I mean, like similar across the city? Or is that, does that compression hit differently in East County than it does the rest of the city?
Counselor, I do have a slide that shows a graphic.
Okay.
So if you hold your question, then maybe I'll answer, be able to answer that better.
Counselor Ryan?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Do you have comparables that you could send us, maybe after this presentation, on, let's see, Washington and Clackamas County?
For compression?
Yeah, for these, for the value and tax summary trends. I won't ask for Clark because it's a different state and I'll, it would be too complicated.
Absolutely, Counselor. I'll get that to you. And it's a different tax structure across the river, so there would not be an ability...
That's why I said I'll, I'll give you a pass on that. But I think it'd be great to see the comparables of the markets close to us in Washington and Clackamas County.
Counselor Zimmerman?
Thanks, Mike. On the assessed value of this, in bold, we have city of Portland, 82 million, and the year-over-year is 3.5%. I know you've got John in the room and this is probably about the time you joined the county. I am trying to understand, about what number would we have seen there in, let's say, I'll call it the good years, 2015, 2016? In terms of that 3.5%, would I have seen a larger number in those years when it seemed like Portland was growing?
Counselor, great question. Typically in those type, I'll call it boom years, where you see a lot of cranes, a lot of new building permits, we typically see AV growth in the 4% to 6% range.
Okay.
Yeah. Just to jump in on that 3.5%, that is mostly returning TIF districts. It's not true assessed value growth about, I, with, if you take out the TIF districts, it would be 1%.
So Mike mostly made my point, and now you just made my point even larger, so thank you for that. I would just want to, the beginning of this presentation, colleagues, said that assessed value grows at 3%. So if then the year-over-year is 3.5, I'm going to go ahead and throw the 0.5 as a part of the number, doesn't really mean much there. There was no, we didn't grow at all as a city and like, that's, that, that's really important for us to see here. And then if you add in the part that most of it is things coming off TIF, it's stuff that was already here. And so in a world where our budget and what we have to spend on city services every year, I don't know of any service that we were all asked to budget this last year that only grew by 3% in its costs. And yet our structure, no matter how, if we just paused everything, we would every year reduce, 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 until the last person standing was the mayor with a dump truck, because that's how this would go, right? We have, for a long time, only made it because we grew further than the required, than the maximized 3%. And this, I just hope that is coming off this graph about why growth is important, given Portland, excuse me, given Oregon's structure of only allowing things to grow 3%, which is completely divorced from all reality of the costs of the world. So this, this should be alarming to see anything close to 3%, especially then when you say some of it came off of TIF, so it wasn't even new. Just making the point there.
The mayor in a dump truck. Can we go to your bottom section here, the compression part, the constitutional property tax limits? We see compression above 20% for the '23, '24 to '24, '25 year. We see much lower compression for the '25, '26 year. Help me understand the wide variation in compression and what leads to those changes? I understand what compression is and how it happens in the chart you've showed, but how do we get to such wide variation in how much compression there is?
So Counselor, compression is an account-by-account test. So we have to look at each account. Over the last two or three years, we have seen most of downtown property, commercial properties, under appeal. And, you know, I think the thing to note is that one, once a property is appealed and successfully reduced, and I'll talk a little bit about this in a later slide as it relates to the US Bank Tower, Big Pink, that value stays static for five years. That, that's in law. And so once we start seeing values are brought down either through appeal or through appraisal work, there's nowhere left for it to go. You know, we're talking about improvements that are getting reduced to not a bunch, and it becomes more of a land value scenario. So as we're looking at value in commercial properties, office buildings on more comparable to land value, then it becomes, there's nowhere left for that, that compression calculation to grow. It's being based on the same value for the subsequent years.
So that decrease in the amount of compression is really about the reevaluation of value for those downtown properties?
Can I clarify real quick? The, the bottom right number, the 16.6% is the year-over-year increase of compression? So the compression actually went up from 33.8 million, so compression's growing.
Yeah, it went from 29 to 33.
So what we're looking at here in the year-over-year is saying compression didn't grow as much between '24, '25 and '25, '26 as it did the year prior, but compression still grew.
And that is, that's to his point of, there is a bottom, it's just wherever that is.
So it grew, but not as much, yeah.
We're still going up, we're going up less, we're not coming down. We expect to come down in compression, maybe.
That's, depends on values.
Okay.
But Counselor, just to clarify what Peter was saying is, and so in '24, total compression loss for the city was 29 million. In '25, so the bill we just created, it went up to 33.8 million. So it's still increasing. And these values as are, are of 1-1, so a January 1 date. And because we're a couple of months away from '26 valuation date, we're not seeing anything that's substantially changing the direction of the way things are going. So it's likely we will start, we will see an increase in compression loss for next years as well.
Okay.
How much, I don't know.
All right, we've got a bunch more people. We're going to try to whip through them so you can keep going through your slides. Counselor Green?
Thank you. And just briefly, that kind of tees up my question. So does the county, or maybe, maybe the city economist, do, do we have a reasonable basis for forming a projection of what we think our near-term year-over-year for assessed value is looking like in the next few terms? Just given that five-year piece and what we already know?
Yeah. Yeah, so it, it's, it's a combination of factors. And one, we do a lot of, me and the county economists do a decent amount of property analysis, and you can kind of see, there is a bottom to the value that properties can drop. And so a reasonable projection is trying to figure out, like, what is the, the mix of downtown properties? How far that, can they drop before, you know, compression is really maxed out? This is the most volatile property taxes will be because every percent drop is, we feel it, as opposed to when real markets are well above assessed values. We don't necessarily feel that at all when there is a drop in, of 10% real market value. Before this, this tax year and before the sale of Big Pink, the projection was this was going to be the last bad year, and then there's going to be slow, slow, very slow growth. Then Big Pink sold and we've had discussions with the county assessor and where, I, I think I'm likely to be pushing out next year as being another equally bad year.
Okay, so you can almost imagine a sort of belly?
Yes. And, and then again, property values can only drop to the level of the land value. And so there is a lower tier wherever that is, and it's trying to find out where that is.
Oh, that's some sort of, that's a strange silver lining. I, last, last note, would you say, is it fair to say that this is actually a cumulative problem because of, if the, if the value comes down due to market dynamics, then the best you can do is 3% from there? Like you can return to the previous trend line of revenue?
So you, you could, in theory, decompress?
Yeah.
And so you would, you could, compression can fall a lot. Compression's a lot more volatile. So if the property value bounced back very quickly, you could see really strong tax growth. And so in prior years and prior cycles, we've seen that, where we've seen assessed values and compression bounce back quickly. I will say, particularly since most of these properties are now in tax increment finance districts, that bounce back does not go to the general fund, it goes to the tax increment finance district. So I'm not assuming any of that. Thank you.
Counselor Quay Amalane?
Do the '25, '26 projections include any boost we're hoping to see with the SDC waivers that we passed?
So the, the forecast now, so not necessarily, just largely because I need to see it before I start including in the forecast. I need to see kind of recovery in development and that sort of thing. And so the forecast will follow the, what's happening on the real market.
Counselor, this, this '25, '26 is the actual, this is the tax, this is all your taxes here. So for us, I don't know where your forecast landed, is why I look to your economists, because I, this is basically what the numbers reveal, right? So there's no forecast in this.
Okay. Thank you for explaining, because that's only been about a month. So would we hope that for the following year, we would see a boost because of that?
Following years, because it's, it's three to five years and it would be spread out. If it's 5,000 units and it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily show up. And then how many of them are in TIF districts is the next question. And so it, it's not something that I think was done necessarily to boost tax revenue. And so it it's not something that I think was done necessarily to boost tax revenue in the short term. And so I don't think it will necessarily show up.
Okay, thank you.
One other thing that we see, and I'll just add to this, is when commercial property goes under construction, it's usually exempt from taxes for two years. That's in law. So you typically don't see until the third year that actually come on the roll. Yeah.
Councillor Ryan.
Thank you, Council President. I often tell a story that I I don't think might be true at all right now. And so it's getting at a point where I just want some reality check, and are we going to change how we project going forward in our revenue model? So the story's this. Our downtown used to bring in a lot of revenue based on everything we're talking about. And then that was the revenue that would pump out to the rest of the city for services. We're at a place where that's not the case as it was just, say, five, six years ago. So what type of, just explain if that statement makes sense because of what I'm hearing right now. It doesn't sound like it's providing that revenue stream like it used to, like it's the Colorado River and it's been drained quite a bit. So where are we gonna, what's our plan? How can we reimagine if downtown doesn't become that provider of the big revenue stream they always to tap into? Let's have an honest conversation about where that's coming from.
The comment you made, it just all depends on by revenue stream, but for property taxes, I would describe the downtown as a drag. We are still growing in property tax revenue, but because of declining values in the downtown, we're not growing nearly as much as we otherwise would be.
Right, so you're affirming what I said. It's not the same revenue stream that it used to. It's it's become a tiny stream where it used to be a river. And so that's a big reality that we have to look at right now.
Yeah. And so in my forecast, just to clarify, not just downtown, but in terms of property tax growth over the next five years, if we had grown compared to how we had done historically and versus how it's projected based on everything we've heard today, that's $35 million plus a year that we are anticipating not to have.
Are you looking at comparables around the country where they've experienced this, where their downtown was robust with revenue streams and then it shrinks? And how did those cities survive?
It it's really difficult, just because in some cases, Measure 5 and Measure 50 protect us in our insulate our taxes in ways that other cities don't. So even if they've recovered faster, in many cases, they were hit harder, where as we didn't see a decline in property taxes, we even despite all that, that's happened, a lot of them did. And so comparing to other cities is difficult, even if what is happening in terms of the property values is the same, just again, because for many of the downtown properties, their assessed to real market value ratio was 50%. So it's, it can drop by half its value before we really start feeling it in terms of property tax revenue.
And my friends in the marketplace, I'll end with this, say that they can't see any city that has been successful with its revenue streams without a successful downtown. Would you agree with that assessment or that comment?
I I wouldn't disagree with the comment. I would say that a lot has changed since history, and so I don't know how things could play out going forward or not. I mean, it, there, there may be success stories going forward in other cities or ours without a strong downtown or not. It's really too early to say.
So anyway, a lot of people say that to me, and they give the Detroit example. And I just hope we're having scenario conversations so that I could say something, I could do more dialogue with them on this topic. And I think that it it comes up a lot. Thank you.
Councillor, I don't know that we'll get into those scenario conversations today. This is a bit more of a 101, but we'll see how far we can get.
I just hope we do it before we decide how to do budgeting next year.
I want to, I want to put out a question that I have that I don't expect to have answered right now. I want us to move on in the presentation, but if we don't get to it today, I'd like to follow up. And that is that you've mentioned TIF a few times, and I'd like to understand the relationship around what happens when properties come back online from TIF and whether compression, what happens to that 3% growth cap during the time that it's in TIF? How that relates to compression, whether there's any downside when something's in TIF, or if it does just grow and we just don't realize it until it comes out? So I can hold that question for later, but just a note for follow-up. And I think that clears our queue so that you all can keep moving.
Okay, so let's jump into the core summary, and this is just the downtown core area of the city. So we've collected a chart here of AV and RMV growth since 2018. The the thing that I want to point out is pre-2020, we had consistent growth of both AV. And this is to your question, Councillor Zimmerman, is, you know, what can we expect in AV growth when times are good, you know, when we're seeing development? And you can see here that the year-over-year change in AV in '19 and '20 were that 7, 5% range. RMV grows at $42 billion, $43 billion, and then 46.2 in '20 as the peak. And as we know, that was the the time of change. The thing that I'd like to point out here is this is when we were sitting in the assessor's office trying to identify what values were going to look like, you know, what were, what was going to happen with properties? Were businesses going to be coming back? How would that affect real estate? And because appraisers are always tasked with the the challenge of looking retrospectively and projecting a current or future value, we didn't really have clarity with that. And so when economists were asking the same questions, because they were trying to develop credible forecasts for budgets, we were, we were trying to allude that we see indicators. At the time, we saw in at the end of '20, in the beginning of '20, we saw vacancy rates for for commercial properties increasing. We were talking to, you know, major investors at the time, talking about tenants were not returning, canceling leases and that sort of thing. And so that's where we started to identify that we needed to be a little more proactive in identifying the trends. Of course, AV, it's it's formulaic, there's nothing we can do there. But in terms of real market value, we wanted to make sure we were up in front of that trend as best we could with data. And you'll see that we have RMV starting to contract after '20, where we see it drop 4% in '21, 3% in '22, '23, 10%, '24, 12%. The reason we we have to do that in the assessor's office is because of the impacts to districts. So we know that if we were not staying out in front of values and trying to best reflect the market condition where we were focusing our attention, we would see a large number of appeals coming. And those appeals then are something that takes one, two, three years to resolve. And not only when we resolve those through the courts, any, any refund that's owed to a taxpayer due to incorrect market values, it's compounded by 12% annual interest in in refunds. So we have to take this job pretty seriously in the office to make sure that we're staying in, you know, staying up on the values and making sure that we're dedicating the appropriate resource to getting it right. Was there any question about this?
Councillor Dunphy.
I didn't do well with math in college, so I appreciate you guys taking the patience with me on this. But am I reading this to say that, I mean, we all acknowledge that through the Portlandia years, the cost of living and the cost of real estate in this city went from being the most affordable city on the major city on the West Coast to being, sorry, I guess, still but like compared to what it was 20 years ago, you know, it's the rents are are out of control, property values are out of control. I bought a house in 2016, it's now doubled in price. That's crazy to me. I'm seeing this as like property value or the real market values are, I mean, kind of tanking, but our collect, our assessed values are steady. So does this mean that when Big Pink, for example, goes from $300 million in valuation down to $30 million or whatever it was, the property, we aren't actually seeing an effect in our property tax collection? That the the real market value may be going crazy, but our, our assessed value is staying steady?
Councillor, Peter kind of talked about this a little bit. And if you notice, the AV to RMV totals, so just, we'll just pick on '18, $11.5 billion has an RMV of $42 billion. So what is that, you know, 20%, 25%? That's what's being taxed, right? So as you see, even though values are dropping, the assessed value or the value for tax purposes is still incrementally increasing due to the constitutional allowance of 3% increase in addition to the new construction. So that insulated the county from any major, the city and the counties from any major reduction in revenues until we start getting into '23, '24, where values are now prolonged in a decrease. Now, this is, this core summary is of all property. And the one property type we haven't talked about and we won't talk about here in the presentation is residential, which makes up about 60% of the overall tax collection. It has been very resilient. Homes, we haven't seen the values slip. We've seen them stable. We've seen them grow, trend up, you know, those types of things. And so the residential property accounts have been somewhat buoying of overall revenues. So there, there are a couple factors going on here. But as we talked about with the compression slide previously, and and the amount of tax increase, you're seeing, you're seeing the revenue decrease due to the real market value of these commercial properties decreasing. So there is an axis. There's a point where it's an inflection, and now it's, it's really impacting the revenue.
Yeah, that, I stole the words out of my mouth, but the only thing I would add when looking at this, this is a summary at the very top level. The distribution matters a lot. And so if you look at a specific downtown building, that value may drop a lot, whereas residential, again to his point, has largely just been increasing. And so, yes, it, we are, we're getting less property taxes from those downtown buildings or other commercial buildings, but we're still collecting 3% more in residential of of the 60% than in others. And so it really becomes a weighted average, and that's the way that Measure 5 and Measure 50 insulate us from like actually losing property tax revenue.
Okay.
It's, we are, and that's why I will always phrase it as versus what we would otherwise be getting, because again, property tax revenue has been going up and will probably continue to go up. It's just not as much as it otherwise would be.
This doesn't, just so I'm explicitly clear, this does not imply that we could actually, I mean, my first place in my brain was said, okay, maybe we're in a market corrections territory, and it wouldn't be as terrible. But what I'm hearing is no, that's, that's not what this is saying. This is the aggregate average, you know, between commercial and residential, and that because of the compression factors, we are holding steady. But if we had major market correction in the residential side, these numbers are all going to tank. Okay.
And councillor slide, I believe it's 12, is you, I've talked before, your previous question, I think that's going to tie a lot of this together on an individual account basis.
Okay, thank you for baby stepping me through this, guys.
Councillor Canal.
Thanks. At some point, do you have this disaggregated by geography or by sector?
Councillor, we do. We, we've mapped it. We've got a bunch, a bunch of cadastral maps online that kind of show the differences, and I'll show a couple of what we have representationally.
Okay, great. How's industrial doing? You mentioned commercial, you mentioned residential.
Industrial has been resilient, much like residential in a lot of the areas throughout the county. So I can't, most of it's in the city, but just look, you know, thinking of most of the areas, we've seen not a lot of vacancies. I kind of want to invite my chief appraiser up because I think he's got a better handle on this question than I do.
Good afternoon. My name is John Botitis. I'm Moulton County's chief appraiser. I can speak to the property type that you have a question about, the industrial property type. It was the darling of the industry, and it was growing, it was expanding. We had all sorts of new cross-docks warehouses, distribution centers. They were building them as fast as they could find land for them. Actually, we're running out of industrial available land in most of the area. It has leveled off. It has changed a bit from what it was before. So that's, it's not a massive declining property type, but certainly it's one that is stabilizing to a much more normal level.
And that's because previously there was effectively a supply constraint that was driving up the the value?
There was increased demand, and that demand comes in various different forms. And obviously, if there's a constraint, then that obviously pushes up pricing even more.
Okay. So getting back to this core summary slide, I mean, I think part of the the key thing to take away here is if if everything stayed the same and just kept growing at normal or if RMV stayed above assessed value, even if the the market value wasn't growing, we would just see 3% across the board here, and that that probably wouldn't be enough, given what we've been hearing from our colleagues about the fact that our costs are going up by more than 3% a year. So in addition to, A, the fact that this average is brought down by what's going on in the commercial sector, we're also facing the fact that we're going to be needing to add through improvement or new construction to the tax base in order to stay above 3% and in order to keep up with our actual cost growth. Is that accurate?
I would say yes. For me to forecast above 3%, I would need to be forecasting new assessed value in the form likely of new development.
Okay. So given that, then what we're saying is that there is a direct, a direct correlation for those, and I think many of my colleagues up here have said this in other words, so I don't want to act like this is new information, but there's a direct correlation between the number of cranes in the sky and the ability in the medium to long term of the city to keep up with its, with its cost growth, unless we start getting out of certain lines of business and trimming back what the city does.
I, I would say, yeah. For the general fund, that is largely true, unless the other revenue sources really pick up.
Right. And then, and then that's an important thing, too, because I think one of the previous slides, you have information about grants, and I, you know, when you see those over year to year, especially in light of the American Rescue Plan and and the ending there. And and as a side note to this, one of the reasons for the, what was described as a deficit, but what was really a desired increase in the budget that we needed to make up $40 million of that was things that were funded by federal funds, that were one-time funds that expired, and the goal of the the budget proposal was to keep those going. But we don't have those federal funds anymore, so we had to come up with the, the difference was the, and that's how it was described as a deficit. So it's not as though the other revenues are bailing us out here. And I know councillor Ryan's talked about the business license tax, having historically been able to bail us out, but not anymore as well. So I ask all these questions just to kind of to to get to the the point here that this is really important, and I'm glad that you're, you're mentioning all of this and that the the market correction aspect of it is very, it is, it is helpful as a way of assessing an individual building, but not necessarily the aggregate. It's a micro factor, if that makes sense. So, thanks.
Councillor Smith.
Thank you, Madam President. So I want to kind of level set this, and and we hear it in a lot of briefings, and much is said about, oh, we're receiving less property tax than we've received, and that's why we have budget holes. But the reality is, we receive more property taxes this year than we did in the previous year. And so I think I need our people to stop giving us that, that fear-mongering attitude because that's not the case, and we need to say what it is. Maybe we took in less revenue than we thought, than we originally forecasted, and and that's all subjective. But we need to call it what it is. And so I want us to start, stop using those phrases, that we were taking in less property taxes, but we took in more than we did the year before. So really, that is not the truth. And the idea that the 3% is added on every year, and so we're, we're keeping And the idea that the 3% is added on every year, and so we're, we're keeping up. I think where the real issue is, is going to be around the business licensing tax, because as the state economist projects what the state is going to do, and then when it actually comes in, if, if the state is actually having an increase, we're going to have an increase in Portland, because the majority of the businesses are in the Portland metro area. So a lot of mixed messages, a lot, we just need, as counselors, I, me personally, as a policy person, I just need plain language. I don't need scare tactics. I don't need any of that. Just tell me what it is, and don't say, you know, it's the taxes, it's the taxes, because it's clearly, the data is here showing that we're taking in more taxes than we did the previous year.
Counselor Creyomalane.
This might help, Counselor Smith, because I want to make sure that I'm following. Let me know if, if, this is great, actually. I'm very interested in this. Okay, so when we're looking at this property tax, about 60% is residential. Is that correct?
Correct.
Ish. And then we have commercial and industrial. We're not seeing the huge dips in residential and industrial as we are with commercial. Am I still on the right page?
Correct.
So that's where the big concerns are. This whole system relies on growth. That's why we need to, we're hoping to see the cranes in the sky. But the big piece is commercial, and unlike someone with a house that maybe might not want to get it assessed because it has value, a lot of these commercial buildings have been vacant, so they're getting their assessed value, and it's coming in a lot lower. Am I still on the right page? And so that's part of why we're seeing some of the dip there?
Counselor, correct. Market value is dipping, and that's affecting assessed value.
Okay, okay, market value. So a piece of it is, for long term, we need to see the, the cranes in the sky and see that growth, but really, the, a big concern is that the commercial market value is low, which is likely connected to vacancies. Or can we not make that connection?
So, Counselor, as an, I'll answer this as an appraiser. So when we're looking at a value of income-producing properties, or everything non-residential, usually we're looking at it as a market participant or an investor would, right? And so they're looking at, when they're valuing a, a piece of commercial real estate, they're seeing what's the income that particular property can generate, right? So you look at rents, you know, how mu, how much rent can we get? Vacancies are factored into it, so if, you know, historically, before 2020, historical vacancy was always like 5%. You know, now headlines are, we're seeing stuff in the 20% to 30% range for downtown. That all puts investors who are market participants in these types of properties to realize that they can't get the rents because the tenants aren't there, vacancy, because vacancies are high, which then creates a risk for, if I buy this property, the holding expenses with maintaining a building, taxes, all these sorts of things, become problematic to the overall income that a property can generate, right? So that then would be the overall reason that investor would not pay as much for a property that has those types of conditions in place, vacancies, lower rents, not sure where tenants are going to come from, you know, those types of things. That's just one of the approaches to how we look at developing a value on a commercial property. The others are, you know, what are they selling for? Comparable properties, like you would with a house. What would it cost to build a new property? You know, that sort of thing. So there are a lot of factors that weigh on answering that, but I think the vacancy is a significant component, Counselor.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I'm going to ask that we do the next two slides together before we take more questions, Counselors, so that we can see two related sets of data, and then I'll ask the same thing for the two slides after that.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
I made a mistake, and the slide, I cannot actually see the numbers. I apologize. So in 23, 24, this is when we were working with the economists to identify in the core, what property types really were we looking at in terms of declining market values? And so we generated this spreadsheet that compared 23 and 24's assessed value and market values between the two years for those category or those business group of properties. So you'll see on the left, commercial condos, hotels, mixed use, office, restaurants, store, vacant land, warehouse. And so we looked at those property types, and we compared the aggregates of their assessed values for 23 to 24. You'll see that in that case, we did see noticeable changes in decline for hotels. So if you follow the hotels across, it declined from, this is the assessed value now, declined in 23 to 24 at 5.2%. We saw a decline in the office at 3.6%, but we did see some properties that actually were, you know, increasing in value and not, and not totally decreasing like we would expect with the office and the hotels. So overall, there was an AV impact change of a negative 1%. If you look at the aggregate AV for all of those classes of property, so not all property types in the, in the, in the city or the core, just those categories, if that makes sense. We were then further looking at the market value, and we see that in terms of market value change between 23 and 24, we see the biggest changes in hotel at 27% decrease, which then is consistent with the assessed value decrease of 5%. We also see a significant decrease in office at 20%, which then also translated into a decrease in assessed value for those property types. So for this chart, and working with the economists throughout the region, we were looking at data that would help clarify or shine light, so to speak, on what property types are actually being impacted by decline, and how is that impacting the overall taxable value for the core, for the city ultimately? And so the, these two categories or this, these two years that we compared are very consistent. They were what we expected to see with respect to offices, vacancy, face, facing higher occupancy challenges, and also with hotels that we were hearing from, that they weren't seeing the, the type of customer they were used to seeing in the downtown area. So the picture is getting painted or filled in a little bit better with respect to the core, and that's where we see the AV and the RV for certain property types and how they're impacting the overall taxable value. And I was asked to kind of combine the two slides, but Counselor, do you want me to move on or wait?
I, I want to hold questions until after the next one.
Okay. So the next one compares 24 to 25, and this was the same analysis that we did for 23 and 24. So you'll see at the bottom part of this spreadsheet, the same categories that we had before, but this time we added multifamily. So up to this point, multifamily had been resilient. It had been, we saw values were increasing, we saw new properties being developed, being sold, being filled, occupancies were up, and we had no reason to pay attention to that property type until 24. So what we've noticed in 24 and continued into 25 is that multifamily, if you look at the far right there, is now starting to show decreases in market value. So between 24 and 25, you can see the various types of, types of apartments, decreases of 15% for nine to 20 units, 16% for five to eight units, and further declines in that. However, because this is sort of the beginning of what we're seeing in terms of value declines, it really hasn't impacted assessed value yet. But what we are trying to do is be proactive with the forecasters and the economists to let them know that we see some strains occurring in this property type. Further down, of course, we see continuations of decline with hotel and offices from year 24 through 25, which is also correlated to decreases in AV for office, and I will note that hotel shows an increase in AV. That is entirely due to the RITS coming online, so it had been exempt up till this point. But I will note that it's also under appeal. So we did our best job at developing a value for the 24 tax rule, but it was promptly appealed. So, any questions?
Counselor Smith.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you for that, that last slide. What policy changes do you suggest that we keep or changes that we make to interrupt compression in, in the commercial property area?
Counselor, I'm, I'm an administrator. I know we've had this discussion where I'd really like to focus in on administering the laws. The only thing that we, so since the limitation is based on market value, the only thing we can do is to make sure that when properties are appealed, that we have the resources necessary to defend those appeals, which we are continually asking for resource to do. We've hired outside consultants to help. We've dedicated a large percentage of John's appraisers to defending appeals, also making sure that we're out there reappraising property to make sure the values are right. But in terms of a policy, I don't have a recommendation on how to affect tax increase due to compression, other than making sure that we're appropriately funded in the assessor's office to manage the values.
So my second, okay, okay. So, and my second question is, and how can we, our budget forecast methodology change based on the property tax revenue that we saw in the 2020 and then, then in the 23, 24? Are there some things that we can do? Because if we need to be liquid in cash, should we be a little, little bit more conservative on our forecasting so that we do have that liquid cash if we have to make up the difference when they're going through the assessor's office and changing the, changing their, you know, their, their assessed rate from their market rate?
My, my goal is to be accurate and conservative. If council wants to have cash on hand or liquid cash on hand, that is council's choice. I'm not going to underforecast in the hopes of having cash on hand, if that makes sense.
Yeah, I didn't suggest that you underforecast. I, I asked, should we be more conservative? He said that we should have liquid, we should have, be able to have cash on hand to be able to pay the differences. That's, that's what I was responding to. So I was trying to figure out, how do we, how do we keep that cash on? How do we, how do we keep enough cash to deal with the appeals process that you're talking about?
That's, I see. Okay. Counselor, sorry, we thought we were-
Sorry. That's, that's me. I didn't communicate properly.
So we work through the county for our budget, even though the assessor's office represents all 59 districts and how we manage it. So right now, we are funded for appeals. We have enough funding to work with our outside consultant in defending some of the more complex ones. I can't, I can't ask the city for money in terms of, of that aspect, but I, I do appreciate the support. One thing that we've been working proactively with the city on is part of our funding at the, in the assessor's office comes through a state grant, and we've asked that that grant, which has been inadequate for 20 years, to be inflated to market. So that would be a support mechanism where we could generate more revenue or money into the assessor's office to fund it more appropriately. But other than that, Counselor, I don't have a recommendation.
Okay. No, we're, we're just trying to learn, because all of us are at different experience levels. And I do like what Counselor Ryan said earlier, if we had an opportunity to look at other peer cities who are experiencing the same thing, then we can look at those models and see what they did to change things around. That's, I'm just looking for some, for some opportunity to, to either keep what we're doing or to change in a way that's going to be impactful to us and that we'll be able to meet our operating costs where we're currently at. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Creyomalane.
Can someone explain the definition of core that we're using here? And then below, what's AN core, HN core?
Yeah, so core, we've generated neighborhoods for the entire county, and core represents predominantly the downtown area, and is there some areas on the-
Yes. So what you're talking about are economic submarkets. So you have economic conditions that exist in certain areas, and they drive the investment grade quality of that area. So if we're talking about commercial, industrial, multifamily property types, as Mike mentioned, you're, you're looking at what conditions exist there for the investor, for the property owner, and then you create submarkets so that you can study those areas, because they perform similarly in those areas, try to group properties in those areas, especially when you're doing statistical analysis. So the core itself is the downtown area predominantly that you see basically from the river. It goes down to South Waterfront, it goes up towards PSU, it comes all the way around Northwest 23rd Area, it goes into some of the Northwest Area, and then actually hops the river and goes over into Lloyd District as well, because Lloyd District was performing similarly to downtown at one point, and obviously there, there are gradients even within, we have, we call it a patchwork or a quilt work downtown. So you have hot nodes, you have lesser hot nodes, and so you look at all of these things. So, but the core itself is that geo-boundary that I just described for you, and Mike has a little bit of a representation there on this map.
I'm going to jump forward to a map.
It's the same of what we call our central city in our planning documents. They use core.
And Counselor, you had a second part to that question, or was it just the core?
That's a, yeah, I got it. Thank you.
Counselor Green.
Thank you. Vacant land, that, that row vacant land, is it, so in the core, if I'm reading this correctly, in the core, as part of that map, there's 449 parcels that are coded as vacant land? Is that right?
That is, Counselor, that is correct.
Okay. That's interesting to me. And then would surface street parking lot fall in the auto-related category?
Typically, that is referred to as an IL property type for us, which is basically a property type that is improved, but essentially as land.
Okay.
Available for development potentially.
And so, is it on this table anywhere?
It's probably listed as one of the vacant land-
The vacant lots.
So it's part of the vacant, okay.
Correct.
Giving me a lot of great information. Thank you.
Okay, let's move through the next two slides with the maps, and then we'll do more questions, Counselors.
Okay. So this is a citywide, and mostly it contains some of the county, but this is a compression map. So you'll see that the map shows a gradient of the, the various blues of between 10 and 30% of imposed taxes that are actually, or extended taxes that are compressed. So you'll see the various shades of blue that fall within that range, and that, and that kind of, you see, follows a lot of the industrial-type properties along the river. You see some, some properties out east, but a lot of it follows right in the central areas within the city. And this is where compression impacts the most, because this is where we see, for certain property types, and this is the core, where we see areas that are, these are on an account, account mapping basis that have been affected by the compression calculation. Countywide, we have over 30,000 accounts that are compressed that have some level of tax reduction because of the constitutional limit. And as I said before, that number is over 147 million for the current tax year. Of course, the city's portion is 33 million of that, so just, just to draw it. But this, I thought, was a good visual that shows the relationship of the taxes you would otherwise have collected for revenue had it not been for Measure 5 limitations.
There, Creyomalane.
Is this a screenshot of a tool that is available to the public?
Counselor, correct. It's on our website.
Counselor Smith? Okay, that leaves me. As I look at this compression map and see that a lot of the compression is in what might be industrial or large commercial spots, there's a fair amount on the east side, as Counselor Dunphy talked about, but there's a whole lot of compression downtown. And so I, I'm thinking about the statement that my colleague made earlier about downtown being the engine of- being the engine of essentially property tax revenue. And I'm wondering if it is more true that downtown is the engine because we see growth there, or if it is more true that downtown is the engine because there's a whole lot of highly valued properties there, but that in terms of growth in our budget as a local government that relies in part on property taxes, that growth is mostly happening out of downtown? And take not where we are now, but in a, a normal growth period.
Counselor, I'll attempt to answer that. I've got some thoughts, but maybe Peter can kind of jump in. So if you think back to, let me see the AV slide here, you'll see that AV in 2020 accounted for, or RMV was mostly centered, or the large percentage of it was centered in the core area or the city area. And this, this kind of talks about the, not just the value, but the density of development that you see in, in the city, in the downtown areas. You know, compare this to how many houses you have to get to the value of a $400 million high-rise office building, you know? It's, so it's, it's one of those of magnitude type answers that we have to go through. But I will say that as we start seeing more of the development pushing out, out east and out, you know, kind of out west, you're seeing more growth in those areas because there is more to develop and more to build in certain aspects of what we're seeing for the market. And I think the, the consequence of, you know, the, the significant decreases in values of some of these downtown properties are, are significant, as we'll get into the next slide.
Yeah, I think what I'm wondering is if downtown with 40% of the blocks maybe in compression is still able, or has still been, obviously, we're in a different point in time now, but if it has still been a driver of revenue growth, not just revenue, but revenue growth, or if there's so much in compression that it, it is not really outside of a year with a pop because of the RITS or something like that, able to drive growth? And it may be that that's a question that needs a longer answer than we have time for today.
Yeah, I, I think a, a simple way of thinking about it, and I know it's not simple, but is to think of it as a weighted average. And if you're projecting property tax growth, if we got 3%, that means that, and as we heard, residential largely grew 3% or more, that's 60%. Industrial's largely fine. We're talking, how did we get to 2.2% assessed value growth this year? And how did we get to 1% assessed value growth the prior year? It has to be that the downtown commercial space fell in value enough that we were actually losing money off of them, just to get that weighted average to 1% and 2.2%. So I, I wouldn't say it's growing.
Yeah, I think, like I said, I'm not looking at right now. I'm trying to understand in, in past years, how much of a driver really was this in the growth? But let's move on, we can come back to it.
All right, let me tie this all together neatly into looking at one account. So US Bank Tower, Big Pink, 111, you know, the address. So I'll just kind of take you through the history of what we're looking at. Big Pink has two tax accounts associated with it. In '24, we had on one of those accounts, a real market value of 32.8 million, a Mav of 69.5 million, and an AV of 32. So this is the, the selection. So the AV is the lesser of the two, RMV was lesser in '24 than the Mav. So RMV becomes the taxable value. That account generated a tax bill of 623,000. Second account, it had an RMV of 110 million, Mav of 121 million, and an AV, again, of the lesser of the two of 110, generating a tax bill of just over $2 million. So '25, we see, on the right-hand side of this, this slide, you see the sales history. So I just kind of want to walk you through that. In 2000, US Bank sells it for 173.5 million. Subsequently, an owner sells it for 283 million, eight years later. In 2015, 372 million. This is sort of back to the earlier question around what's value and how investors look at income-producing properties. So the, these were, you know, these were investors who bought property, increased, you know, its value for income purposes, sold it for more, and that's sort of how this continues. Fast forward to just recently, the sale of $45 million. So that sale then becomes the basis for our value in '25. What we know about value in tax court is when a, a subject property actually sells, that becomes the predominant indicator of the property's value, right? And so that then be, is the basis for our new valuation for the current tax year. So breaking that apart between the two accounts, we have a market value in '25 of 10.3 million. Mav stays consistent at 69.5, and that's because it did not trend at 3%. The test actually is interesting in that 3% is the max, which is, it's in the Constitution stated as the greater of 103% of the prior year's AV or the prior year's Mav. In this case, because the, the Mav is so much higher, it stayed the greater of, at 69.5 million. It did not grow at 3%. The AV is the lesser, obviously. It becomes the 10.3 million. Tax bill then decreases to 197,000, a dip from 623,000 from the prior year. Second account, again, the addition, or the, the sort of subtraction of the 10 million from the 45 million gets us just right, just under 35 million for the market value of the second account. Mav stays consistent at 121 million. AV is the RMV, 34.65 million, and the taxes are now 662,000. So a couple of things I want to point out is that we identified in '20 sort of this trend with value. So in '24, so the property sold in 2015 at 372 million. In '24, if you notice, we have a market value there of just over 142 million. So we were, we were out in front of it. We felt like we had a good handle on the, the historical data and how that applied to current valuations. The '25 sale blew all those expectations away. And, and we saw a $45 million sale, which is pretty close to the land value. So if you can imagine, you know, Big Pink and the improvements not holding a lot of value in relation to historical value of the land and the improvement, that's where we start seeing a scenario in the assessor's office that we just don't have, you know, there's no way for us to know this. You know, I think the market was surprised. And so if you add up the two tax bills for '25 of 197,000, just under 200,000, plus a 662 of 862, you see almost a $2 million drop in taxes from one year to the next. That amount includes 350,000 in compression loss. So but for compression, the tax bill this year would have been 1.1, 1.2 million. So the compression becomes a sort of an exponent to the reduction in just the tax calculation of taxes of rate times value. So that was decreased because the value decreased, the rate stayed the same. But compression then compounds the impact, and that's where you get the addition of growing from 27 million last year to 33 million this year in compression loss. Did I answer everyone's question?
Counselor Canall.
Yeah, so let's say that this, that Big Pink is fully leased in a year and that the value is, that, that the market value is significantly higher, the real market value. How does the bounce back work? And can you walk us through the sort of constraint factor on that?
Counselor, I'd love to. So this, this allows me, and I was hoping for that question, I will say, because there's a, a common misconception in Oregon, and I hear this constantly, that my realtor or somebody told me that taxes can only go up 3%. That is absolute false. There is no 3% limited. As this group now knows, the 3% limited, limit accounts or is for maximum assessed value. So just, it's a, it's the value constraint. It has nothing to do with taxes. So let's take your scenario, and let's say that it's back to 300 million in value, like someone would buy it for 300 million. You'll notice there that the maximum assessed value, that's still on the books, so that's the frozen value, is 121 plus 70, so 190 million dollars. We would be basing the tax bill based on 190 million the next year. And that would then take the tax bill from this year of 800,000 to 3, 4 million dollars. So there would be no limit on that increase. That would, that would bounce back. Now, we would still do the compression test and, you know, if that, there, depending on how much of a value increase, if there may still be some compression in that calculation, but certainly not of the magnitudes that we're seeing today throughout the downtown. So that would then increase it.
And that, that is a place for growth in our revenue that is greater than a lot of other, in terms of the speed at which it could grow, that's significantly greater than a lot of other options that we could take. So assuming we, obviously, we don't, this, this room does not have control over the degree to which Big Pink is leased out in a year, but that's something that would be immediately beneficial.
Correct. Can I clarify one thing, Counselor? Yes, it would be beneficial to the tax bill. I believe Big Pink is in a tax increment finance district now, and so that new assessed value and new property taxes would be going to the tax increment finance district and not the general fund. And so if you see in the general fund a forecast of very flat, it's because of the TIF, yeah. So just a clarification there.
We'll leave that one to Counselor Green.
Counselor Green, you happen to be next in the queue.
Thank you. I, I don't know if I'm a masochist, but I've really enjoyed this presentation. I, on the TIF thing, I've really appreciated what you have guys established for us because it's really important, because some of my colleagues have been hinting towards policy changes that we might need to make. The long-term consequences of those policy choices need to be understood in the context of the long-term revenue consequences of the recent market adjustments and compression, everything you laid out. I am looking at Prosper's West Side TIF District map overlay, and they have a number of blocks that are like gerrymandered out of it, that are just like exempted from it. And notably, the block on which Big Pink sits is not included in that overlay. I hope that that's the correct thing and not just a mapping error. I don't know why we've exempted certain blocks from parts of it, but that might be a really good outcome for us. So, and I think they do this because you can only have so much acreage under a TIF district at a time, and so if you're picking and choosing, for instance, it juts way out to pick up Portland State University and also the area around the Keller. So it's like, okay, if you have to make some choices. But so, so it looks like when we get decompression effects from Big Pink, that'll flow to unrestricted coffers to the extent that it can, which is, which is a good thing. I am curious, if you guys know off the top of your head, though, when we do pass, when the city adopts ordinances for our TIF districts, there is this sort of like, this base year level of, of revenue. Is that sort of like, is that defined in that ordinance by reference? Is it sort of like, okay, it will be FY 2023 or FY, is there a specific fiscal year that is, that is affecting these, the basis of these, these upcoming TIF districts?
So once we get notification from a district that there's, these, these properties are in, we freeze the value, and that value then used for tax purposes goes to that district. Everything above that frozen value then goes to the new TIF urban renewal area. We rely on you to tell us how much value is needed from one year to the next. So as was indicated the past few years, there's been a few that have gone away, which it adds the value back to the other districts.
Oh, and Peter, were you going to follow up on that?
No.
Well, then I have a follow-up question for you, Peter. So when we adopted the, the new six TIF districts in 2023, do we know what tax year that those are based upon? I see Jonas nodding.
We do. I. Yeah, I don't know if it's a tough answer.
But yes.
Okay, well, we'll figure that out.
It, it, it should be on the website, it should have the exact values, the assessed values of the frozen bases. Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you. It's, it's troubling to me, it's, to know that our decompression and our future tax growth relative to the picture that we're in is going to largely be encumbered by TIF districts is extremely troubling to me. Not because I don't think that we need funds for development, and not because I don't think we need funds for affordable housing set-asides, but that the core of our city doesn't basically get access to that at all. And so the, to overcome that, we've got to have an enormous rate of growth in new production of taxable parcels, basically. Or we need to have other revenue sources. So that's, that's the way it looks to me. And I just think that we all need to come to terms with that if we're not already there. And so when we, when we approve the action plans that we'll be faced with, we, we really must understand how those are going to affect and offset the conditions that were burdening our city for the next several generations in terms of our, our loss of, of general fund revenue. And that's not just for the city, that's for the school district, that's for all the other property tax jurisdictions as well, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken. Is, is that true?
It would affect all of the districts that normally would collect revenue from that account, correct?
So, you know, that's just for us to think about, colleagues. You know, not really, you know, trying to get to an answer here. But, but I do wonder if you guys can talk a little bit about the order of compression in terms of our liabilities on, on top of the property tax bill. I'm particularly interested in the FPDR piece, because as I understand that, that is capped at, I think, $2.80 per thousand. And because it's a fixed liability, if the real market value decreases year over year, then we probably have an inverse relationship in the rate on each property to, to fund the FPDR. And so, and then that, but that doesn't, that, that also feeds into the, the, the caps for, for compression. So, so if that grows, does that then continue to place downward pressure on, on those other subsidiary or subordinate local options, if that makes sense?
A, a couple, not clarifying points, but just a level setting, I guess. FPDR is levied with the City of Portland permanent levy. And so all of the things that the county assessor showed you earlier, those, like the total imposed tax and all that, that is both the permanent levy and FPDR. So we're not imposing $600 million of general fund, it's 600 million of general fund and FPDR. And then there is, we, we basically, it's, it's as such, as a permanent levy and being a levy as a permanent levy, it gets compressed after local options. So in the same way that if the general fund rises or any other permanent levy rises, it will further compress those first down to nothing. And so is that kind of answer your question? And then I, I think there was another one.
No, no, it, it does. And, and as I understand the program design from the documents on the website, you know, we, we must fund that by charter. That's a pay ecosystem. And, and so if our costs to the program grow, and they are projected to grow for another 20, 30 years before peaking and then leveling off, then we will have to increase the FPDR rate, which then grows the dollar impact on the bill, but then there's a total cap on the bill, right?
Yeah, the, in the, again, not, just a slight.
Getting down in the weeds, sorry about that.
Yeah. If the liability grows faster than the assessed value, then it will further compress. If it grows slower, then it will actually be a form of decompression, I guess.
Okay. I probably could keep talking, guys, but I'll spare you and let my colleagues join the discussion. Thank you.
Going to jump in because we were on TIF and I had a TIF question, but we've moved away. I'll try, though, anyway. Counselor Green asked about the year that the value is based on for properties that are within a TIF zone, and you said that that's posted on the website. But what I'm wondering is, when things come out of TIF and go back on the tax rolls, presumably within that period of time, they have still been capped at a value increase of 3% asterisk, except that because we have redevelopment, maybe there's a significant change. Do we capture that significant change in order to set the baseline, right? The 100% that we can. The 100% that we can then grow from every year? Do we capture that baseline the year of redevelopment or the year that it comes out of TIF and back onto the regular tax rolls? And, and what I mean by that, maybe this helps, is if you have a property and they redevelop eight years into being in a TIF district, and then we are adding to the, we're adding to the assessable value 3% every year, that value, when it comes out of the TIF district, back onto the regular tax rolls, will be very different than if we assess the value based on those redevelopments the year it comes out of the TIF district.
You want me to take this?
Yeah, in, I can.
Counselor, I, let me see if I can capture this in an example. So let's say we have a property that's valued at a dollar that goes into this district. The dollar is frozen. You collect on the dollar as the city. The 3% growth, so the 3 cents in the subsequent years, gets allocated to the TIF. It does not, you do not collect on that 3%. You're still frozen at a dollar until you tell me as a district that we're doing away with the TIF. And then, let me just finish. There, there are some exceptions to this rule, but this is kind of how it works mechanically. So if we have, you say you do away with that, all of the frozen value that was increasing incrementally over those years going to the district now gets released back to the districts, all of the districts. So it's the additional incremental value that gets released, not, it was always there, but you just weren't getting the increases.
Here's what I'm wondering. The property goes in at a dollar, and for the first five years, that 3 cents and then 3 point something cents that's collecting is going into the TIF district. Eight years in, that property is redeveloped. It's now not worth a dollar plus increments of 3 cents and 3 cents plus a little bit more. It's now, that would put us at, what, like a $1.26 or whatever that would have been? It's now worth, because of the redevelopment, $3 instead of the $1.26 that it would otherwise have been. So instead of, we have the dollar we're collecting, we have the 26 cents that's going into TIF, we now have a property worth $3. Does that reset the baseline? Because when you redevelop something, you can set what the assessed value is differently. You're not limited to that cap of the 3%. Does that reset the baseline in that year that the redevelopment happens? Or do we continue to calculate based on the $1 plus some, and we reset the baseline of that property when it comes out of the TIF district? When does that happen?
So the $2 of added value is exactly what goes into the TIF. So we would not release that $2 of, of extra value until you release the property.
What I'm trying to understand is when, I, I understand that. What I'm trying to understand is when it comes out of the TIF district, is the rate that you are assessing for the city as a whole reset? So is the, hold on, I'm getting my terms right. Is the maximum assessed value based on a reset the year it comes out of the TIF district? Again, if it hasn't been redeveloped, I understand it's just been growing. Or is the maximum assessed value based on the reset in year eight in the TIF district plus the 3% every year?
So when that, we reappraise that property when the final construction has happened, right? So when, we call that the exception year. That has no bearing on the TIF in terms of when that goes back to you. We, we then capture the increase of maximum assessed value, how the constitution allows us under that exception provision. We continue to generate the tax bill with you getting the dollar and then the additional new construction value going to the TIF. Now, when you release it, all of the additional value goes out. If it happens to correspond with the construction ending on the day that you release it from the TIF, then you would see your scenario play out.
But in essence, the TIF, being in or out of a TIF district does not affect the maximum assessed value at all, even when something is redeveloped?
Counselor, correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dunphy?
Thank you. I also have a TIF question. Something caught my attention of what was the exchange with Counselor Green, as it relates to school districts, again. When a TIF district goes in place, those funds are frozen in place for all the tax collectors in that region, not just the city, right? So the counties portion, the school districts portion, those are all frozen at that moment?
I generally would say yes, Counselor, but I know there were some laws passed, and I'd have to work with my team on this, to know that there are some aspects of school districts that were being excluded. I don't know if that applies to all TIFs. The problem is, we have 30 years of differing options within this world, and so it's not a uniform answer. The new options, I would say yes, but I'm not sure how school districts are affected in this, in this equation.
Okay. Yeah, I'm, I'm just thinking specifically because, you know, a lot of times when we talk about schools, we talk about Portland Public Schools, but we know that there's seven school districts that are in the City of Portland's boundaries, five of which are in my district, six of which, I don't remember, it doesn't matter. And so I like, for example, the new, they call it space, I call it SPAC, Sumner, Parkrose, Argay, whatever, the entirety of the Parkrose District is encompassed in that. The entirety of the David Douglas, maybe not the entirety, but a big chunk of the David Douglas District is in the New East 205 District. Does that mean that there, I mean, is there, is there a likelihood that they are going to be, sort of, their, their income is leveled out then in some, some levels? Like their, our actions are affecting them? And I guess, not so much to you, but maybe you don't know, do, do the school districts know that? Are they engaged when we set up TIF districts?
I do know they're engaged.
Okay, okay.
I, I will also add, school funding's complicated, but with the state sharing. And so the impact of TIF districts is a little bit less direct and more diluted than other jurisdictions. But I do know that Prosper and others engages with the school districts.
Yeah, I know it's super not, I know that, like, Parkrose, for example, I don't want to say a majority, but a significant amount of their funding comes from the airport, and it's not property taxes. And so it's like a very dumb system, but okay, just one, at the very least, as long as they are engaged and they had a, okay, thank you, sorry.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zimmerman?
I just want to say thanks to Council President and Counselor Clark for bringing this forward. It, it's really necessary, and I think that this body of 12 amplifies just how confusing the Oregon property tax system is. And I would, and, and I, it's a, it's a self-critique on ourselves. I say to Mike and John, I, I think that you have done some really important work over the many years, to the point where I think the County Commission historically has grasped, grasped this system better than a lot of other governing bodies, given their role in overseeing it and your role as an assessor. But I've seen, and I've been through many of these presentations, and I would welcome this as a more regular and continuing dialogue, because I think for the next largest taxing authority in the state after the state, I think it would be good for us to continue our, our understanding of this. And I, and I say that with a couple of things. I don't think we're ever, and this is where I have to cut them out because they're not politicians, some assessors are elected, by the way, ours is not, and I think it actually is good because ours is professionalized deeply. But there's some editorializing that our body should be able to do, but we can't do if we can't explain the system. There's, you've all heard me rail on, on Measure 50 and our property tax system. I'm gonna give it one good thing, and this is why I think we have not unstuck it. If you were able to buy a house on a waitress's salary in 1990, and that neighborhood was moderately desirable but nothing special, but today that neighborhood is hot, and that house that you live in is worth seven figures today, Measure 50 has essentially ensured that you won't get kicked out of that home because of rising taxes relative to your real market value, even though you still live there. So there's, the one good thing is predictability, right? Predictability is the one good thing we've gotten out of this system, and I hope that we will see that. But there are other fixes, and now deep inequities to Counselor Dunphy's point, that when that lady passes away or sells that home and the estate sells that home, who is able to spend a million dollars on that home and still pays the taxes as if that home was bought for $37,000 in 1990, that's the inequity that occurs. So it's not inequitable to that person who lives there. I think that's deeply fair. But it's the after part, and that's where some of our districts have experienced that so heavily. And so I think we owe it to our voters to get better on this topic, because we have the most functional government relations team in the state of Oregon. And if we're ever gonna change this constitutional amendment and include predictability, but actually get something that funds our governments, it is gonna have to involve us. But I will also say that there's some confusion in this in that three, I'm looking right now at the 1989 City of Portland budget, I'm also looking at the 2005 City of Portland budget. In 1989, I cannot find for the life of me a business license tax. Okay? And we saw earlier with Jonas's presentation, the BLT represents a significant portion of our general fund. 1989, no business license tax. By 2005, we've brought that in, and we now have to have a business license tax, right? So these two measures that these gentlemen told us, about 5 and 50, have occurred since then. And in 1989, property taxes for the City of Portland brought in 142 million dollars. 15 years later, and through a significant changing part of our city's history, property taxes brought in only 158 million dollars. So what is that, $16 million growth in property taxes over 15 years? I think we're, we have, we have put things in place to overcome a system, because our property tax system, which it should be the thing that funds governments, cannot fund governments. And the, and we, because we are the largest jurisdiction, we have been able to forego what almost every tiny jurisdiction has, has done over the last 10 to 15 years, which is they have created special levies for police, for parks, for fire, for libraries, they have reduced their services, Troutdale stopped having police, and they had to buy it from the county, Wood Village, same thing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. Because Portland was hot, and because we grew, and because we had cranes in the air, and because value for the property, we were over, able to overcome the structural system that will put us in a deficit, where if we don't fix it, it's the mayor and a dump truck at the end of the day. Well, maybe 100 years from now, but that's what it would be. And it is, if the biggest city in the state is not paying attention to that, while every tiny city has been screaming it for a long time, but also doesn't have the, the oomph to change anything in Salem or with our voters, kind of shame on us. So I just, I just say, because we're in this very special moment where Portland is hurting, our property taxes are not coming in, our cranes are not up, and the values are no longer supporting government, and we see a business license tax that went from 0% of our budget to 50% of our budget, and will become more of our budget as these property taxes don't rebound, we have to take a moment here to recognize where we're at in the inequity of this system, and it is deeply broken. Because we can be so informed and knowledgeable of government to be elected to these seats and still not understand that when you sell your host, house, it's not reappraised. Your realtors are wrong, your neighbors are wrong, your neighbor has a different tax bill than you, even though your house is worth the same $500,000. And I think 12 people who were elected across this area and have some pretty big microphones should be really tied into these facts. So I just say that, I would not encourage you to go read the 1989 budget or the 2005 budget or any of the others, but it does show us that we're not in a system that has to be. It's been created over some time, and I care a lot about it. Obviously, I am way too nerdy on this, since I was a baby appraiser when John was a slightly toddler appraiser, and now he's the chief appraiser for our county. And so I just really appreciate you guys coming and spending time on this with us, because it's, it is foundational to our work, very confusing for the layperson, and affects every part of our lives, whether we're owners or renters. So I just, thanks for coming over here and putting your time into it, and I really hope that we get more of these, so we can watch what happens when a property rebounds, what doesn't happen when a property rebounds. That's the big side of this. That's the bigger picture of this, is how do we, how do we keep Portland on, and all of Oregon frankly, on a growth, growth pattern despite the system that's against us? And I think that's really important.
It's our pleasure, Counselor. Thank you for the words.
Counselor Knell?
I agree with every word of that. Thank you. I don't get to say that, yeah, I don't get to say that a lot, so I, I wanna, I wanna take the opportunity when it arises. I also wanted to point out that the, the equity element of it, it's hard to look at the, the geographic part, and this goes back to Counselor Dunphy's point earlier, too, where, you know, some of the people that are benefiting from the particular context of North Albert, North Williams in Alberta are the people that managed to hang on while the rest of the neighborhood was getting gentrified around them. So it benefits also the folks who've been around in that exact way of being able to hang on, in addition to those who kind of came in early in that period of gentrification. The question I wanted to ask was about FPDR as well. So it's a third of the property taxes we collect right now. It's 224 million, based on your slide, out of 678. That's almost exactly a third. And what I have seen in the projections for FPDR is that it's gonna be growing by nearly 6% year over year. 5.8 is the, the amount that I've been looking at through 2033. It starts to level off a little bit after that. And so as we can expect, my question is, can we expect that the fact that that is growing faster than the aggregate growth in our property tax revenue right now means that we will, that the unrestricted portion of what we're getting in, in property tax is actually gonna decrease even more, because we're expecting more of our property tax dollars to go towards this program?
So, all things held equal, yes, if you increase the size of FPNR and private tax saving and just, you know, hold everything kind of the same, it will compress the unrestricted general fund more so. Just a couple real quick clarifying points. So we collect 600 million between general fund and FPDR, that did not include the local option levies, which is another 80-ish million or 70 million, something like that.
Yeah, I'm looking at the last slide of your presentation, so it shows the 678.
Yeah, that, that's just the permanent levies. So 600 million of permanent levies in.
Right.
Of theirs, yes.
It was all 678 million, just so, you know.
Oh, it does.
I'm sorry, was it my slide or?
It's the first presentation?
Oh, sorry, apologize. Yes, that's correct. Thank you.
About Jonas's presentation.
Yeah, so the cities, I'm distinguishing city and county here. So, you know, even including that additional, the, the children's levy, all the different things, it, it's a third, because 224 out of the. So what, what I guess I'm bringing up here is, and I know this has been raised by people across the, across the city, including it was most recently in the, the PMC report, that we can, the fact that we can expect that to grow, unless we can get out of that by growing property tax revenue in the aggregate by greater than the growth rate of FPDR, we're going to end up with more restriction and, and a smaller general fund revenue from property taxes. And that's particularly concerning to me. I think that we need to obviously find a way to maintain and, and fulfill our obligations to our, our public servants and, and our retired public services, of course. But I also want to make sure that we're doing that in a way that's, that's more prudent. And I'm concerned that if we are not serious about reconfiguring how we fund this and getting away from a pay-as-you-go structure. we're going to be in a deeper bind than all the binds we've learned about today. And there are many. So, I just wanted to make sure I daylighted that before we're done here today. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Green?
Yeah, I just wanted to, Counselor Zimmerman had raised a really important point about the change in property tax revenue to the city's budget from, what, 1989 to, did you say 2005 or something around there?
That's what I could find.
Yeah. We also had TIF districts during that period as well. One of those is South Waterfront TIF District, which has been renewed. So, when we think about, okay, this is a temporary thing we're using for development, and then we expect returning TIF resources to come back to the revenue. When we choose to renew it or extend it, we don't get that back. And so, going to continue to hammer that point over and over and over, colleagues, when we think about how we make our budgetary choices.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you so much for being here today. The team really appreciate it. And I think Counselor Zimmerman's right that we need to probably spend more time with you. It's really hard for me to hold on to a lot of the details behind this, you know, let alone master it. It's just, it's really difficult. And it's going to be very difficult to try to change the law, to go to the voters, to change Measure 5 and 50. It's a very heavy lift, and I don't see any significant change coming in the near future. I don't see the legislature initiating any change, although there's been some, you know, minor conversations around it. I have discussed this with the League of Oregon Cities as our representative to that board, and discussed the fact that if we're going to change this, it needs to be a grassroots effort statewide, a coalition effort to go after this. But that's a ways out. They do have some ideas around tinkering around the edges of this. I'm sure the Assessors Association has worked on this as well. I don't hold out a lot of hope for a lot of change here. But just, I just want to let you know that I have had that conversation with the league, with the board, and we'll see where, we'll see where that goes.
Thank you, Counselor. Colleagues, are there any other questions for our guests here today? Okay. We started, I think, at a lot of different places today in terms of our background here. And I really appreciate you all making the time to help give everybody a common baseline of understanding of what it is that we're looking at. We know as we enter our budget work, looking at the fall readjustments and then starting to build toward next year's budget, that a lot of what you've described to us is going to have a significant effect, and it will in out-years as well. So, having this baseline is really important. I said previously, I know that you all rearranged some things to be able to be here, and we really appreciate you taking the time. So, thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Colleagues, as a reminder, this is just a piece of where our city budget comes from, but it's a big piece, an important piece, and a piece that has a lot of the drivers, certainly not all, as Counselor Ryan reminded us earlier, but a lot of the drivers for what we'll be looking at over the next few years, starting with the fall technical adjustment that we will see over the next couple of weeks. So, just as a reminder, that will be before the Finance Committee on October 20th and before the full council on October, I believe, 22nd. You do have those documents, not related to today's presentation, but today's presentation is a good baseline to help us understand some of the conversations that we'll need to have through our next multiple budget seasons. Thank you, guys, all for making the time. And with that, I will adjourn today's work session.